Rule call, please.
Yes. President Peng?
Here.
Vice President Romano?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Present.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3rd and June 26, 2023. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with bylaws of the Board and applicable state regulations.
Thank you. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, we adjourn to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, personnel matters, health insurance, contract dispute, former staff and students, litigations, and land purchases. So we should be out in an hour, 7 o'clock. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so you guys in 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Have everybody, motion to recon into public session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one. Now, we have a student presentation today, so I'd like them to go first, The Fall Vision. Oh, it's, the screen is over there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So right now, I'd like to invite the Board if they'd like to see the presentation, they can go right into the front row currently, right now, for a student presentation. You can see them on those screens as well.
Possibly, me, there's a very good chance.
Was that?
My computer may self-destruct like five minutes.
Okay.
Just then.
It's a brand-new building, you know, it'll happen.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you so much for this opportunity. We are Fall Vision. So today, we have a couple of things we're going to be going over in our agenda, but let's start off with some brief introductions. So my name is Annika Batnagar. I am a longstanding resident of Edison. I am currently a rising high school senior, and in the future, I hope to pursue a career in healthcare and medicine.
Hi, everyone. My name's Arnav Batra. I'm a rising senior, and I'm looking forward to a career in the STEM field, particularly engineering.
All right, so we're going to begin with our story. So Fall Vision was inspired by a tragic accident that is extremely personal to us. One of our close friends lost her grandfather due to a fatal fall that occurred within his own home. In the early hours of the morning, he slipped and fell and became unconscious, and because of this, the fall went undetected for several hours. By the time he reached the ER, the extent of his internal bleeding led to the loss of his life. Now, we were informed that timely intervention could have led to a different and more positive outcome. So we started researching, and as we did so, we realized that this is not an unisolated incident. In fact, each year, about 3 million adults end up going to the ER for fall-related injuries, and about 32,000 of these end up being fatal. And so, inspired by this tragedy, Fall Vision was born in an attempt to prevent fatal falls and help keep our Edison community safe.
So when we did some more research, we looked at what are the current solutions for fall, you know, preventing these falls? And the first thing we saw are these single-click panic buttons. And, you know, a senior, if they're in distress, they can press this button and get help, but, you know, unfortunately, these are very invasive, and they're very difficult and bulky to use. You constantly have to wear it and think about, you know, what would happen in a fall. The second solution we saw were smart devices, so for example, you can see there, that's an Apple Watch, but, you know, these are very high-tech solutions, they're very expensive, you'd have to charge them, and they're very inconvenient. And then finally, the third solution we saw, which was very experimental, but we thought it had some potential, were fall-detecting cameras. Now, you can see on the screen there, that is a seven-camera system, so there's just no way that that would be able to, you know, practically be used. So we knew there had to be some, a better way to do it, and we actually centered Fall Vision around the third solution, trying to find a way to get better fall-detecting cameras that, you know, can actually save lives. So this is our solution. We are patent pending, and it basically uses a basic Wi-Fi camera, that you can see there, any camera, and these non-invasive wristbands. They're just green wristbands, you can see here, my grandmother is actually here in the audience today, she's wearing one of the bands, she's an active user. And so they're very simple and easy to use. The camera will actually track you indirectly by tracking the band, and that's how we're able to do it with just one camera, and that's why we've actually filed a patent there. Now, in the case of a fall, we will contact your emergency, contact through text, you can set up, it can be anyone, you know, people you trust with this information. And they can also use our two-way audio system, so you can actually almost like phone in to the situation. You can be anywhere in the world, and you basically open the camera feed, you look, you know, what's the situation, and you can speak into your phone, and the audio will be transmitted to the, to where the camera is, and the senior will be able to hear your audio, and they can actually respond, so you can say, you know, "Are you okay?", and then you can hear the response and make your decision based on that. So our solution also uses Google Cloud, and like I said, we do have our camera surveillance app, so all of our cameras are, do not lose any of the functionality of basic surveillance cameras. You can still use them as you would use any security cameras. And finally, we do have our Falls Fall Reports, because, you know, we admit the system is not perfect, so in the case that, you know, it detects a fall and there wasn't one, you can actually go to our website, fallvision.com, and you can upload a picture and basically say that, you know, this was the situation, and it detected a fall when it should have, and that way, we can better fine-tune our algorithm so that that cannot happen in the future. So, you know, we've done a good job, we think, explaining it, but we're going to show you a quick video for visual, that just goes over to 60-second video, our products, you can play that, right there. Okay, I don't know if you want to go back to the... Go back to the slides, if you want, I can just dictate, no problem. See, all the, all the video basically shows is someone, you know, has a fall, and the person is able to log into our stream after getting the text and take a look at the situation, and then they can make their decision based on that, because the person is wearing the ca, wearing the band. So these are our future goals, you know, Annika will talk later about our product testing, but we have implemented the solution in some of our close friends and family, but we'd like to scale it up into commercial areas, you know, senior homes and adult care facilities, and really see, you know, does this product meet their needs, and if so, how can we tweak it to, you know, better, better help them? And finally, we'd also like to decrease our costs, because although it is very affordable with scale, we'll be able to do that better and increase accessibility, impact as many people as we possibly can, you know, in our community and save lives.
So, like Arnav had started to mention, we have begun installing our camera in some of the homes of our close friends and family, and actually, for example, one of the earliest homes that we installed our cameras in has an elderly individual with Parkinson's disease, and because he is extremely susceptible to falls, his family members were, you know, constantly concerned about him, constantly had to keep an eye out, and with the introduction of this camera to their homes, they now report feeling an added sense of security and relief, and they know that even if he is to suffer a fall, they will be immediately alerted, and they can then take quick action accordingly. So in addition to this, we have also contacted a couple of old-age facilities and recreational areas around Edison, for example, Brighton Gardens and YMCA respectively, and we have initiated communication with them about potentially presenting in these facilities, both about the importance of fall prevention and also about potentially installing our product. Now, in terms of outreach, we do aim to partner with at least 10 old-age facilities, and in that, we hope to directly improve the lives of at least 100 senior citizens throughout the Edison community. So with all this being said, how exactly can you help? So right now, we've reached a point where, you know, we feel like we have created a good product, we have confirmed the viability of our product through feedback from our friends and family, but what we've realized is, this is a point where we would really need your support and your help. So one of the biggest ways that you can help is by promoting Fall Vision and its mission, and this can be through media mentions, like in local news channels and newspapers, and also through shout-outs in community events, like the upcoming Food Beer &amp; Wine Festival that we're having. Another way in which you can help is by helping us to network with the senior managers and the decision-makers in these adult care facilities, so that they can, you know, test out our product and see whether or not it fits our ne, their needs. And lastly, you can help us connect with specialists who are experts in the fields of technology and business, so that we can seek mentorship and guidance from them. And again, if you can think of any other ways that you can help, they would be greatly appreciated. So with that being said, we will wrap up our presentation. Thank you so much for listening. For more information, we do have our website linked below, and we've included our email address for your convenience. And at this time, if any of you have any questions, feel free to ask, and we would be more than happy to answer. Thank you very much once again.
Thank you for the nice presentation.
For President?
Yeah.
For President, can I, can I ask you a couple of questions? So basically, it's a wristband, and the camera moves with the wristband. So that, is that, do you have any, do you need very specific cameras for the, for this to work, or is there are some other, you know, other cameras can work as well?
Well, no, it's not. Our algorithm is, does not in any way rely on the camera itself, it just relies on, you know, the feed coming in. So you can use any camera you want, you know, theoretically, you could even use your phone camera, but the one we've been do, the cameras that we've been using are just normal, you know, surveillance Wi-Fi cameras, because they're easy to set up.
But it, it goes with where you, you go with the band, right?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So have you, you've been probably watched the, the show Shark Tank, right?
Yes, we have.
Hope to see you guys there.
Yeah, we're looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you, guys. Great presentation.
Great presentation, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, for President, first of all, I'd like to thank both of you for your presentation, unbelievable job. I think for the audience, twofold right here, right? Not only shows ingenuity, creativity, and entrepreneurship, but the soft skills that our students possess as well also, right? The ability to sell, the ability to communicate effectively what their vision was from product development, all the way to its inception and operation, so congratulations, great example of what we do here in Edison Township.
And filing for the patent, by the way, too, which is awesome.
Kudos to the parents for encouraging their activities and making sure that, you know, what the future generation contributes to our society. Thank you.
Yeah, great job, guys. Now, we're going to proceed to public comments, resolution only. Seeing now, motion to end public comments?
Motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve the personnel report.
Motion?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Oh.
He just left.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve administration, curriculum, and instruction, purple special service reports.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to approve finance reports.
Motion.
Well, that was good. I'm going to give that to Mo, Mr. Moen Patel.
Give it to him, give it to him. I'm second.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have committee reports, athletic committee, Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yeah, hello, hello, everyone. Before I start reading the meeting minutes, I just want to announce that it's, it's probably the last time I'm going to doing the, reviewing the meeting minutes for athletic committee. That doesn't mean I'm giving up the responsibility of reading the athletic committee, but I plan to invite the athletic directors next time to review the meeting minutes, so that the public can know who the athletic directors are. I'm sure a lot of you don't know, and then it gives them more ownership and accountability, because they are the one who's going to be carrying out most of these actions anyway. So, that being said, the key takeaways, we had multiple athletic committee meetings over the last two months. Key takeaways are for volleyball, the school district is ready to implement volleyball as a sport in all four middle schools, for boys and girls. So volleyball courts in all the middle schools are updated to meet the volleyball tournament requirements, and we have enrolled our four middle school girls and four middle school boys teams in a middle school volleyball team in a GMC, which has total 13 teams. And for cricket, school district is ready to implement the cricket as a co-aid, intramiddle sport in the, all middle school, as well as a co-aid club sport in the high school. The detailed discussion of the meetings has been documented in the meeting minutes, I'm not going to read through it, I'm just want to give key takeaways that I want people to go away with, but if you're interested in going through the detail, you can read the meeting minutes of all the discussion that happened in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Curriculum committee reports.
Okay, thank you. I think likely, I'm probably reading the curriculum committee meeting last time, as last time as well. I'll be inviting the next athletic, academic director to read the meeting minutes going forward, and I'm going to go through the key takeaways. We had a, two meetings in, in May and June for curriculum committee. The key takeaways for the meeting minutes were, the high school program of study for computer science is updated to remove the dependency between Python and Java. So there was a dependency between the two classes, where in reality, there is no real dependency, so the, the guide is updated to reflect that. Middle school schedule changes detailing the, you know, you know that, you know, in the next school year, we'll be going through the middle school schedule changes, and a lot of parents had a question, so I had a discussion with Dr. Alderelli, and then what we decided is, we're going to document the problems we had before, you know, before this year, the challenges, solutions, and benefit of the new, new curriculum or new schedule that we came up with, and we'll publish it on the school district's website for, for residents to look at. School district is also planning to enable the online sports form submission, so right now, I'm sure, you know, if, if you're a parent of any, any students, you have to submit your sports form physically, you have to, you have to print it, fill it, and submit it to the school district in the summer, as well as during the Christmas time. So what the district is looking at is, is coming up with a way to submit those form online. We are looking at, the district is looking at doing some pilot program in December, because we're going to have another sports form submission happening in the December for the spring sports. So we are trying to have that, and do, through the Genesys, have the process to submit the forms online, to make it easy for the residents to submit the forms. Next thing is, the school district and administration explored the possibility of offering additional elective to the freshman students in ninth grade. At this time, we cannot do it because of the space constraint, but we will continue to look at offering more electives going forward. And again, detailed discussions of all the meetings has been in the meeting minutes. I just want to read through the key takeaways that I want residents to go with, but if you have any questions, happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vishal. Any questions? Seeing now, finance and facility committee reports. Mr. Shi?
We had two meetings in the month of June. First is June 22nd. Attendance, Mr. Romano, myself, Moen Patel, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toz, Jacqueline Beckey, Donna Abtumaco from the principal of JMI, Will Colibus, Scott Murphy, Marlene Baruso, and Pete Campsiano, they're from USA Architect. The first is that we discussed the facilities. US Architect reviewed the JMI design, which was approved by DOE. There was setup meetings with the, the building principal to finalize the details of the design of, of the building. John Adams, the Woodrow Wilson Construction Meeting will start in July, this is their gym construction. Change orders, we don't have anything at that point. Herbert Hoover, work is scheduled to begin late June, we just had the groundbreaking ceremony a couple weeks ago. John Adams, the Woodrow Wilson Locker Room, converging the construction bid opening mid-July, and we just approved, we, the resolution to decline the bids, they're over our limit, so we're going to somehow rebid. The athletic fields, the football field, the Edisonheim JP demolition has been completed, installation is, is beginning to start, and target completion is before September 23. For TJ, Kappa Construction will start mobilizing in the middle of this month, so we'll start their work. JP Baseball Field, it has substantially complete, there's a little section that needs to be completed, then we're ready to go, as you know that JP is on a little swamp, a lot of water issues, and so if you actually go to the JP Baseball Field, you will see a section which is natural grass, and the reason for that is because it's a wetland, and we need to have some things put it in to, to drain the water and stuff like that. JP Classroom Edition is waiting for DO, NJ DOE approval, the target approval is sometime mid of this month. And we also talked about paving projects, with the construction of the baseball field at the back of the baseball field, the pathways and the areas got disturbed, so we're going to pave the, the baseball field, the, the pathway behind the baseball field and some additional seeding for the grasses. Architect record, the committee recommended two new architects, which was approved today. JP Lease Purchase, we'll have a public hearing this month. The bids, we talked about having construction managers, and that was rebidded. We just got the, the, you know, the bids back, we're going to look at them, and we're going to pick a construction manager. Recommend for the, the board to approve. Building and ground fleet, there's a request to replace two vans and two trucks, and the committee agreed with that, and it was approved in today's finance resolution. The ESIP program, work has already started in multiple schools, preparing for the roofs for solar installation. The loan is closing on July 14th, which is this month. The meeting was adjourned at 5:45. We had another meeting on June 28th at 4 o'clock, attendance was Mr. Romano, myself, Moen Patel, Jonathan Toz, Jacqueline, and Jennifer Edwards from Acacia Financial, and Tony Solimani from Walens. So the Bank Council of Financial Advisor reviewed the detailed process of lease purchase and timelines, meeting adjourned at 4:45, submitted by Jerry Shi. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing now, um... I, I'd like to go ahead with the resolution that I'm going to introduce. So, as many of you know, for the past three years, the school board has worked really, really hard to achieve a $0 tax, school tax increase for our taxpayers, and meanwhile, we managed to introduce a lot of expansions in our schools without increasing the burden of taxpayers. But we just know recently, hear that the Edison Township is going to have a tax here, budget hearing in the near future, this, this week, I think, and the tax increase is in the range of 3.2%. So I'd like to ask the township to join us in holding the line on the municipal tax increase, like what we have done in the past three years, if we can, the school board can do this, I think the township can do something similar, so that's why I want to introduce a resolution to urge the township, Edison Township, to reconsider their tax, their budget.
Tax increase?
To reduce the tax increase for our taxpayers. So, Mr. Toz, would you mind reading the resolution?
No. Okay, so we have a resolution, and as Ms., President Peng stated, encouraging Edison Township Mayor and Council to join the Board of Ed in holding the line on municipal tax increases for resident and residents, and reconsider its proposed tax increase. So basically, what this says is, whereas the residents of Edison pay property taxes to support both the township governed by the mayor and council, and the public schools of Edison Township governed by the board, whereas as good stewards of taxpayer money, over the past three years, the Edison Township Board of Education has held the line and not increased the amount in school tax levied upon the Edison residents. It's been zero for three years, unheard of. Whereas in contrast, Edison Mayor and Council is considering the adoption of a budget on July 24th, 2023, that would increase the amount to be raised by local taxes for municipal purposes from $103,44,000 to $106,329,000, an increase of 3.2% year-over-year. And whereas Edison Township Board of Education believes it is imperative that all of our community's locally elected officials hold the line on taxes and control costs, so that taxpayers are not overburdened, especially in today's inflationary environment, now therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education hereby encourages the mayor and council of Edison Township to join the Edison Township Board of Education in holding the line on taxes levied upon Edison residents as part of the 2023 budget year. Be it further resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education expresses its opposition to the budget as introduced by the mayor and council of Edison Township, and urges it to reconsider the proposed tax increase upon Edison residents contained in same. Be it further resolved that the board secretary shall transmit a true copy of this resolution to the mayor and council, business administrator, and township clerk of Edison Township.
Thank you. So I'd like to ask my fellow board members to join me on the sending this copy to the township.
Motion.
Okay.
Second?
Do I have a second? Rule call, please.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Abstain.
Mr. Schneider?
Abstain, please.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
I'm going to abstain as well.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Abstain.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion fails.
For President?
Yes.
So just to let the public know, that this was a resolution pa, this was a resolution to send over to the township, to let them know that the Board of Education has not increased the taxes for the past three years, it was a 0% budget increase. The township is looking to increase your taxes by 3.2% year-over-year. So this is to let you guys, the public, know that it is not because of the Board of Education your taxes are going to increase this fall when they pass it. So just wanted to let that be clear and known. We voted to send this resolution to the township to join us, to not increase the taxes. Four of us said yes to send it over, four of them abstained. Thank you.
Did not pass. Correct.
Right, it did not pass. Yeah, but I just want to stress that, yeah, that we have $0 tax increase for the last three years, whatever, I mean, a lot of citizens are confused sometimes, that the tax, they still see their tax bill increase, that that money, that tax is not introduced or caused by the school, and they, they're not, those tax increases are not coming to the school, they're going to the township, and that's going to be increased another 3.2% this year.
Right. So just to be clear, the township is increasing your taxes, not the school board. Thank you.
Yeah. I have upcoming, upcoming meeting announcement, the next public hearing for Lease Purchase Board Retreat is this coming Saturday, July 22nd, at Ed Center from 9 to 12. And the next public meeting is August 15th, Tuesday, at Ed Center. And the next public meeting is August 15th, Tuesday, at Ed Center at 6:00 PM. Next, we're gonna have board member comments. Anyone? Oh, Dr. Adorelli?
Just a couple of comments today. First of all, you know, at the beginning of the meeting today, we had a wonderful opportunity to celebrate and we said some really nice words outside with regards to this wonderful structure that we're currently sitting in, which was the work of not only this Board of Education, but previous board members as well. I'd like to congratulate everybody that's currently sitting on the dais right now for their efforts in making this possible, as well as future renovations, possible that not only address our overcrowding, but at the same time provide spaces where students and staff love to come to work and learn each and every single day. I'd be remiss if I did not mention the two board members that are currently sitting in the off, the audience right now, that were part of the inception of this as well. Ms. Conway, thank you so much for your hard work and for keeping us on task and asking questions each and every way. As you could see, this is the fruit of your labor. As well as Ms. Podolsky, thank you so much always for your kind words and your continued support. I also just want to acknowledge our building principal and our vice principal, Mr. Scully and Ms. Defazio that are here this evening. Thank you so much for your hard work and efforts. As a former principal, somebody that's gone through construction before, I understand there's a lot of moving parts, right? Moving classrooms, it is making sure that things are safe and that people are happy at that time. So congratulations for a job well done.
Okay, do I have a board member comment?
Madam President.
Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Okay, so first I have to say happy birthday, Mr. Scully. Thank you for spending the night with us. All right, very, you know, important day, you know, we got this official ribbon cutting. I just have a question for Dr. Adorelli. I received some comments from the residents in the recent grade school rating. Some of our schools were not as high as before. They have some concerns as to why, you know, that happened, if you have anything you want to comment.
Greatschools.org, Mr. Shi?
I think so, it's a great school, yes, yes.
So the Greatschools.org, they use, you know, multiple criteria to assess and assign ratings at that time. They're always a year behind, so I would imagine that they would be using data from '21, '22.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
Right, so they're always, they're always, they're always behind with regards to that too. And as you could tell over the course of the last couple of years, you know, there was a few years where we didn't have standardized assessment data. The COVID pandemic with students and staff coming in and out with regards to quarantine days, right? Like initially you had 14 days, 10 days, seven, then it went down to five and then they were constantly changing symptoms. And this not only affected student learning, but staff's ability to deliver effective and consistent instruction at that time. And for some students coming back off the heels of the pandemic, it's the first time they have actually sat down and taken a standardized test, right? So throwing everything into the mix with regards to that, you know, not, you know, as everybody kind of get back in the swing of things, it's expected that there might be a little lag in some way, shape or form, but much like this, this building and the commitment here, our job is student achievement and I'm confident that as we move forward and are putting, hopefully the pandemic behind us currently right now, that we'll be able to get back to the business of educating students each and every day with our teachers delivering quality instruction.
Thank you.
Board President, if I could add on to that as well?
Sure. I hope that answered the question.
Yes, it's, yes, thank you.
Dr. Adorelli, just to, just piggyback on his point, is it possible that we can do a little bit more thorough investigations into a lot of the issues that are occurring through those surveys, just to let us, let the parents be at a little ease in regards to that you're doing your due diligence and making sure the superintendents are following up with whatever issues that are occurring in their school?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the commitments that, yeah, one of the commitments that we've had here is just to make sure, being more transparent and proactive, right? So making sure that parents are apprised to changes that are happening, not only in the curriculum departments, but on the athletic fields and how the Board of Education operates and missions and visions that we collectively have as an administrative team. So too, that's, that's been the commitment of not only my central office team, but communicated all the way down, so.
Excellent, thank you. And also just to let people, parents know that sometimes a lot of parents leave like a Yelp type of rating in these, these websites and that also affects the score too because they're looking at those aspects where you're getting a negative one or negative two for whatever issue that the parent might be having for their child too. So that's all being played into.
It definitely is. And that, you know, listen, that's a quick and easy piece for parents to look at also and it includes multiple factors, but the ones that we really look at are how the state evaluates us as well, right? That's really what our benchmark is, to make sure that we're falling within those categories and showing adequate performance.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments? Mr. Rivera.
Excuse me, first of all, I want to echo everything that Eddie said. You know, I want to congratulate and thank our former board members for all the hard work they did in the past and happy birthday to you as well and thank you both of you guys for your hard work in, in leading this building. I know it's, it's been a task, you know, but I want to recognize your hard work, your hard work of your staff as well. I'm gonna ask the same two questions I always ask, so will be directed to Mr. Adorelli and Mrs. Peng. The first question is what is the status of negotiations, Dr. Adorelli and Ms. Peng? Maybe you can inform the, the public of the status of the superintendent.
Sure. Mr. Shi, would you like to comment on that? I can, I can.
Yes, so now we have the, our union representatives here as well. I think we're making great progress and it's not final until everything is signed, so we're still some things that we tried to finalize it and we are on a good path. That's what I can say, given the, the rules of the negotiations and that's all I can say. If you want to add more Jeff, you know, feel free and, you know, thank you.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, for the superintendent search, I actually invited the search firm to come and have a quick summary update to the board when we are joined to the closed session again.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I'll say something.
Yeah, Mrs. White.
Happy birthday, Sean. And what a beautiful gift, right? This is so great. And when you think there's gonna be like a thousand children in this building in September, I mean, it's an incredible thing. Both of you have your work cut out for you, but I know you're just gonna, you know, just excel in everything you do. Elizabeth, dreams come true, you know, perseverance, you know, and you did do that and that is just so great. And you as well, Carol, I know you're her backup, you know, so good job and it's, we're just so proud of all of it and you guys deserve it so, so much. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you. See now, oh, Mr. Mohan Patel.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on this brand-new building and happy birthday as well. Thank you, Carol and Elizabeth, for your relentless effort in making sure that we talked about Lincoln School and we made it happen. And thank you to the parents for paying the taxes to make sure that this does get done. And other than that, I just want to say, great job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President?
Yeah.
I just want to add one, one thing. So, you know, in the audience, we have Mrs. Conway and Mrs. Podolsky and at the same time, we also had Dr. Chan was also part of the, you know, the team when we, you know, started this project and also Shivi Pasar Maruka, so they're not here. I want to give them credit for what they did, so thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna start public comments. Anyone? Ms. Conway.
Oh, and, and one more and Mr., you know, Kevin, Dr. Kevin Hudak was also part of the team last year when the, you know, the project was ongoing. Sorry, it missed the, the board members, five of you guys. Thank you.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I'd like to thank you immensely for tonight.
Get closer.
Initially, the meeting was scheduled for next week and when I told you that I was gonna be at the Yankee game, I was rather disappointed, but then I found out it was moved to tonight and it would be at Lincoln School, I was thrilled. So I feel bad for Mr. Scully that he has to spend his birthday here, but I'm being a little selfish that I was able to attend. It's beautiful and I think we better keep our fingers crossed that we don't have to start talking about addition number two for this school because it goes rather quickly. The next thing I'd like to talk about, that was the good thing, now I'll move on. The next thing I'd like to talk about is this resolution that came up and I truly question the idea of going through with this and I'm kind of glad that it did not pass because the history of the Board of Education versus the municipal side of the district has been kind of strained over the years. And it's only, and I'm gonna give the kudos to Mrs. White and her intense pushing on developing the liaison committee between our Board of Education and the municipal government. Now, we can voice our opinions. Should we really voice our opinions as a Board of Ed? But there are meetings where the budget will be discussed and at those meetings, those of us that voice our opinion can gladly, let them know, so people can see that it's the Board of Education has kept to their voice of zero. It's the municipal side that needs the additional funds, but I don't want to undo all the work that Mrs. White has done over these years. I want to go ahead in a positive voice and Mrs. White, you just need to keep on pushing. So I'm kind of glad that it did not pass, but at the same time, we do need to let the public know, we're doing our best to keep our budget.
It's up to them now.
The municipal has to do what they have to do, even though we're not thrilled because we're taxpayers too. The next thing, I'm a broken record. Mr. Patel, you said we could read the minutes, but guess what? Another month is coming on and we do not have the minutes. So it's not, we're not able to read any of your minutes, any of Mr. Shi's minutes or whoever else gave minutes. I don't, I think Mr. Patel gave two groups. So please move forward getting the minutes so the public can review them. Even though the agenda didn't come out, I, you know, I looked this morning and I couldn't find it, but that doesn't mean anything because I'm not the, I would never apply for the IT job, but at least we would get a chance to read the minutes so that we can make sure we see everything. The next thing, on Facebook, and this is my next journey, Mr. Shi had written about all the things going on and how the schools were getting this and that, and I thought that was fabulous that you related that. But I did not see James Madison Primary's kitchen expansion and that has been something my children went to James Madison Primary and that little alcove has been the kitchen at the primary school for, oh, my daughter's gonna be 30. So it's been a long time coming. I would like to see that and I don't know the particulars about it, but I would have liked to have seen that on the list. So if that's something that can be brought forward, I would truly appreciate it. And the, that's it. I did pretty good and I got a minute, 36 seconds. Thank you.
Mr. Toz?
Thank you.
Can I ask you to share the status of the GMP kitchen?
Yep, we are in the design phase for planning that project. So we're working with district architects, you know, to come up with the conceptual design. We've created cost estimates so we can move forward with, you know, creating, taking, you know, a design and actually building it.
I think the target is scored a bit sometime this, this year. So, you know, I touched it a little bit. The original design was no good, so we had to redesign it.
Any other public comments?
Carol Podolsky, 39, Jonathan Drive. That was always how we had to address the board and it's so ingrained in my mind, I have to still do it that way. About 35 years ago, when my two wonderful, precious children were going to be starting in public school, my husband and I were still in a condo in South Edison, but in a condo. And so we had not committed to buying our forever home where our children would be educated nearby. And I had heard a lot, I had been a teacher for over 10 or 12 years in New Jersey, and I'd heard a lot about the success of Edison. One particularly was the FCC LA group that I was so impressed with because this girl I had been in college with was the one running it, Trish DeJoy Laird, and I said, wow, this is really amazing. And then I heard about the Edison High baseball team and then I heard about the choirs and the bands. And I heard the bands practice around the corner from the house we did choose to buy, right by James Madison Primary School, because that was what I don't think worked well. I think primary, grade schools were good like that and the children had slightly different needs as they grow and so I really liked it. And the only thing that bothered me, and I didn't know how much it was gonna bother me, was then I got involved in the school and doing a lot of things in the school and I found out that we did not have an elected Board of Education. Everyone in my family ran for the Board of Education, even my cousin, and that's just what you did. If you were concerned about education, you ran for the Board of Education. Well, we didn't have that option because we, they were appointed by the board and a group of active parents brought it up, pushed it, pushed it, and we ended up having an elected board. And we said, oh, I hope we have candidates. Well, we had like 37 running for the slots on the board, but it made sense to us and we changed and the financing goes on. My daughters, we'd go to East Brunswick or wherever and they'd say, wow, we must be poor, Mom, these schools are beautiful. But, you know, we'd inch along and inch along and so wherever we are, we've tried a whole lot of other ways to get this done. And one of the things was that when we had a Board of Education, then we also had, the town council was a totally separate entity, that if the governor cut, slashed all the budgets in the state, they were the ones who could let us still have our budget. And so we tried to maintain friendship with them. And over the years, it's gone back and forth. I've been up there, I've been down here, I've been outside, you know, and we just have to try to get along with the other people and try not to do things that will cause more problems because you really have to, in this town and just anywhere now, you need to be careful what you wish for because you might get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? See now, we're gonna, we're gonna.
During the closed session.
Okay, I'm gonna be, are joined to the closed session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's search. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we don't expect any action.
Yeah, there's no decision to be made, so we're not expecting to come out to the public session again. Thank you. I'll see you guys next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.